Okay, we'll call the Finance Committee meeting to orders. First on the agenda, County Clerk Joe Provance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The handout I just gave you, most of which has just come in. There are some new, well, your town clerks will be getting this. The front one, they're doing away with our handicap stickers that they hand out. We're supposed to dispose of them because they have the word handicap down there. So, the state will be sending some new ones in with this person trying to get out of a wheelchair. That's going to be the new ones that'll be coming out. Secondly, just recently, we've been asked to call in and have discussions on the new CDL permit process. I've given you the timelines when certain things have to occur. The one that will affect us, well, most of this will affect us in how we accept and what we can accept. Even though we were all fingerprinted to do the EDLs, Enhanced Driver's License, they're making us get re-fingerprinted, this time with the online scanning. So, we'll be making an appointment with the Personnel Office. Each one will cost us $110. The state assured us that the federal government will reimburse that. So, for the time being, I'm going to have to take that out of my budget, just so you know. And this is interesting. Secondly, I've received from Taxation Finance their approval of the semi-annual mortgage report. I'm giving that to Judy, Mrs. Garrison, and also carbon copying the Treasurer and the Real Property Tax Office. That's basically what we're up to. We're applying for a grant to scan through NICID some of our tax records from '74 to 2008. So, that'll alleviate a lot of our space problems in one of the buildings. And that's a no-match grant. Whatever we get, we get.
Any questions? Do you have a resolution here, Joe?
Oh, I did.
Yeah.
At the back, I'm sorry. Yes, that's to take the encumbered money and put it towards two temporary positions like we had last year. And hopefully, there'll be backscanning for the online system.
Moved by Mr. Fairby, second, Mr. Marriehu, and Mr. Moore. Discussion? Be known all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My report was emailed. Are there any questions on my report?
Any questions? I have just one, I guess probably more than Dan. We're assigned counsel. What are we, are we?
We're looking good right now.
We are.
But it's, we're always looking good at the beginning of the year. But towards the end, when they start submitting all their claims, it can go anywhere from there. But right now, it's, I think we're under last year's figure at this time last year.
Are we still having difficulty getting attorneys from Essex County?
Continuing to see new ones coming from the Glens Falls area.
Now, it's my under, I did have a conversation with one firm. Clinton County, I believe, contracts out the whole thing for the one law firm.
Okay.
As does, I think it's, and I did talk to Dan Manning about it somewhat, something that maybe we need to, need to do RFPs and possibly explore that. It might be significant savings by doing that.
Exactly. I know I've discussed it with Dan, who's been pretty busy.
So, we will, and I can talk him off. Any questions for Brenda?
I have one other item I'd like to just bring up. Last year, we were able to purchase two desktop scanners. And we began scanning our vouchers January 1st. It was kind of crazy in the beginning, but we've worked with Louisa Town. She wrote a program that's wonderful. And we're now scanning. We should be able to save approximately 150 boxes from going to storage, you know? Because we have to keep records for six years. So, it's about 150 boxes we'll save. That's it?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Treasurer Mike's been excused. Any questions in regards to his reports? Dan, County Manager?
I just have one. We talked about this, we met this nutrition building. And what we're looking for is a resolution authorizing us to get a preliminary design for construction of a new nutrition building and potentially to include within that maybe space for soil and water in Cornell Cooperative Extension. The May 15th date is coming up for the priority projects, like development projects. So, we want to try to get something together so that we can present to them for potential grant funding. It's clear that the nutrition building is too far gone at this point to spend, to spend this amount of money on. At least that's, wouldn't be my recommendation at this point. So, what I'm really looking for is just a resolution authorizing us to get a preliminary design. This would not be something hugely expensive. Basically, Mike would need something that would identify square footage, location, some of the space that would have to be identified within some kind of a preliminary design that we could use to present at the May 15th meeting.
Someone want to move? Moved by Mr. Marriehu, second by Mr. Moore. Discussion, Bill?
Dan, is that then to look at relocating that building?
Right. I think, you know, again, this is really early discussion. I think locating it to the fairgrounds makes the most sense. We had sewer and water there. We also could accommodate the needs of some of those other two departments that are over there at the same time. We could also make an argument that the use of that building could be extended out for 4H and for those kinds of things, which would strengthen your application that you may put into for grants for those purposes. There's not a lot of locations that are centralized within this Essex, Elizabeth Town area, Westport, which has sewage, sewage, which the Westport location does. That's a huge advantage.
Will we be able to use the existing building for something else later down the road?
Potentially, you might be able to. But, you know, again, I think it's going to come down to the mold that's within the coolers now, how much the cleanup cost would be, and whether that's, you're going to get some cleanup cost regardless, even if you decided to remove the building. If you didn't, and you could spend some money to make it a storage building, you might be able to do that.
Use it for parking. Stick that building down, and we need a parking lot desperately.
Just to follow up with Dan, I was saying this. There's an immediate need that this group is working on with Alan and Patty and Rob and Dan and Mike and a bunch of us that are working on. There's an immediate need for temporary services, and we're working on those logistics out. This is a long-term plan. And as I know, time is essential here because of the North Country Regional Council meeting on May 15th. I'd like to get a priority project in front of the council that day. And Patty and Alan and Mike have agreed with Dan to get a presentation together to bring forward that day and hopefully get the attention of the council that it's a much-needed service for Essex County seniors. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Charlie?
Also, it would be essentially killing three birds with one stone because Cooperative Extension and Soil and Water, that building is so, so out of compliance. And it would be difficult to provide an argument to say that you would want to invest money in that structure also.
The only question I would have, does Westport meet that timeframe that we're under to get meals to certain areas by, within that, what is it, two hours or?
Yeah.
The answer, short and simple, is yes, because with a new kitchen, we could involve Quick Chill. Once we have Quick Chill meal, there's no time-sensitive delivery needed, so absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions for Patty? I have just one. Where are we on the temporary sites? What's happening?
Um, we, I have called, well, as you know, we went down to the VFW. I've also spoken with someone from the EMA, from Taconaroga. She, it's a possibility. She also gave me another name for the Thai area. Also, Randy suggested, I say, of course, we need to reach out to those folks. I say, of course, part of permanent. But that's certainly a possibility. And the J Building itself has some potential as well.
Are you still looking at splitting the county?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's going to happen?
Yeah. It's kind of funny, but in a weird sense. You really understand, looking at trying to do this, how many meals these folks put out a day? Total is somewhere around, somewhere, given the day, 1,400 meals. And to find a place that has the ability to have six stoves, for an example, is not out there. So, we are definitely looking at subdividing the operation until we can get a permanent solution.
Okay. Any further question? I just want other, at what point do we have to be out of the building we're in?
As soon as possible.
I guess, okay.
We're kind of setting, we are definitely setting a goal of May 30th of last summer. The biggest thing is that we'll probably have to move some of the stoves out of this kitchen into someplace that we consider. But there's nothing firmed up yet. And like I said, I have not reached out to Sable Forks myself.
Okay, thank you. Anything further for Patty or this current issue? Okay, so, we need to vote on Dan's, if someone needs to opt, did someone move that resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, so, we need to vote on the resolution authorizing the preliminary design for the building at the fairgrounds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie? Thank you, Patty. Mike?
I just had a question. Now, if that's going to be a dual-use building, is there a site over there where you could have entry level, two levels, you know, ground floor to exit, entry? For instance, you had offices, a kitchen, and the bottom and?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Honestly, Mike, I would think I would need to talk to somebody to see what would work best. I don't know whether it would make more sense to do one story or do two stories or however you, you know, however that plays out. But as soon as I'm able to talk to some design people, we'll make sure we bring that up.
Anything further for Patty?
Thank you.
Anything else, Dan?
No.
Charlie, Real Property?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I attached my monthly budget, and I just have a couple of other items. I want to remind everybody that the Board of Assessment Review Training is going to be held here April 30th from 6:00 to 9:00. We've had 19 people register for the training. And for the towns of Elizabeth Town, Westport, and Crown Point, we've invited every Board of Review member as a refresher because they did do a reassessment project this year. And we are expecting, you know, a few more people than the norm. And if you have a five-man Board of Assessment Review, three is a quorum. If you have a three-man Board of Assessment Review, two is a quorum. And you will be okay for that night. And I think as of right now, we are okay for this year and won't need to call on the County Board of Assessment Review. And we're working hard upstairs, and as are your assessors, on their tentative assessment rolls. Those should be filed on or before May 1st in your town offices and available for the public to view. And I believe every town already has a link to our website. If you do, then you meet the requirement for people to be able to view the tentative assessment rolls on the website.
Any questions? Where are we on the tax rebate program? Is that going to happen this year?
It's not going to happen this year. It was, everything to do with STAR was cut from the budget. So, STAR will remain the same as it has in years past. The personal income tax credit did not pass. None of those items passed in the budget. So, what we've been dealing with is the way it's going to stay. You can still apply for a STAR and get a STAR. And there still is a 2% cap on how much you can save from one year to the next on your STAR exemption.
You know, the shared service credits and all that, is that, where is that right now? Does anybody know?
Randy, that's next on my, it's on the list to bring up today about the tax freeze program. I was going to bring that up, but.
Anything further for Charlie? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Randy.
You can stick around, Charlie, just so thank you. I certainly don't think I'm an expert on this tax freeze incentive plan. I asked Dan Palmer to sit in on the webinar that they had a couple of weeks ago. And I really didn't know how to approach this because I know that Dan has submitted a five-year plan on the, for the tax levy to get the county back in shape. But I also did not want the county to discuss the possibility of the June 1st deadline. So, what I was thinking is that the Budget Committee that we had in place two years ago that would work with Dan and looking at all possible options to meet the June 1st deadline with a plan because you have to, you have to have a plan in place by June 1st. And I'm not so sure, the five-year plan, Dan, this year's tax levy increase, was it coming up 5%?
5%.
So, you know, I don't want to speak for the county and don't say, and say that, well, we're not going to do it because we have a five-year plan and we have that. I, what I really wanted to do is have the Budget Subcommittee get together and try and discuss options. And I know there's a lot of options being thrown out there about the money that Jerry brought up on the forest money and Dan is trying to figure out what's best to do. And the county attorney is going to advise us what we could do with it. I'm not saying use that to make this. I just would like some recommendation, and I think Dave Wade was chairman of that committee, aren't you? So, I'm sorry. But if, maybe that committee could get together, if you could get to Judy on a date where you can, because time is essential here to come up with something. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I don't want us not to look at the possibility because our increase, plan increase is only at 5% right now. And if we, you know, the tax rebate and the tax incentives are, meet the cap and some consolidation efforts, which we're looking at right now at the, on some of the other facilities, I don't know how it all plays into place. But I think the Subcommittee should meet with Dan to go over what he learned in the webinar and see if there's potential there. And if the board doesn't want to do it, fine. I just don't want to miss this opportunity.
Does the tax freeze mean a freeze on the levy? Or does it still allow you the 2%? Some other words, are we looking for 3% or are we looking for 5%?
Well, you're, I think you're looking for 3. I think that's, you have to maintain the 2%. And then you have to show at least a 1% saving over a three-year period moving forward. So, you would have to, you would have to have a plan that demonstrated that you were going to save at least 1% from, from that point moving forward three years. I got to tell you, the one thing that concerns me, and I, and under the guidelines, it says that the requirements for meeting, for participating within the program is that you had to comply with the tax cap in 2015. And the county didn't. So, that's, you know, if, I'm assuming that language means that for 2015, you had to meet the cap. Because I'm assuming that the language moving forward would be, if you met the cap, ours would be meeting it in 2016 as opposed to 15. So, that's the problem I see as the biggest stumbling block to this.
That's one thing we'd have to check on. I'm not sure if that, Dan.
But I, here's, here's what I, and I've been thinking a lot about this. One of the things that did occur almost through every municipality was locally, you did meet the tax cap in 2015. So, even if you developed some kind of a shared service or plan with the county, we may not meet it here at the county because we didn't meet the cap in 2015. But it may provide that you guys in the towns would be able to meet that requirement and participate in the, in the credit.
I agree with you, and that was my next thing. And just so everybody is aware, because I had anticipated going to the school district. It's true, you cannot share with a school district.
No.
It's, it's, you know, on their own. So, it would be good for that committee to meet because if Dan can find out more information from that webinar about how the towns can meet it, we might all be able to do this as a group with the county and save us all a lot of headaches. So, you know, I, I, no way, and being the County Manager or Treasurer here, I'm just saying that we should look at this because June 1st is coming awful quick.
The, the shared services that the county, is that something that can be, that we have been doing? I mean, I can think of a lot of examples.
Yeah, there's some.
From the Real Property Office right down through.
As of right now, you can only go back to 2012, if what I'm understanding, is that correct, Dan?
Yeah. Well, my question is, you would have had to been doing it in 2, if you were doing it in 2010, and you're still doing it today, does that count? My question.
I'm not sure.
Or is it something you had to start in 2012?
I'm not sure what, no, you can't go, it had to be started in 2012. You can't go previously, the water and sewer agreements and all those things, youth facility. You can, no, it had to start it after 2012.
Right. It had to start after July 1st, 2012. And the efficiencies that you gained have to carry to, all the way to 2018.
Yeah. So, why don't we get the committees, if you don't mind, Tommy? If the Budget Committee could get together with Judy and plan it, they, that they can meet with Dan and see how it can help the towns. If the county can't qualify, fine. But at least it's helping all the 18 towns meet this standard that's out there. I think that's the best way to approach it, unless you, anybody has any other ideas. I just didn't want to, not want to bring it forward and then have you guys come back and say, well, jeez, Palmer and Douglas should have let us know. And Palmer and Douglas are letting you know today.
The only difficulty is going to be, because we definitely ride on the county's coattail on many, many services, what we have been for years and years and years. To try to single one out that didn't start until 2011 is going to be very difficult. If there isn't, I don't think there is any, to be honest with you. Ron?
Also, if I, and I may be wrong, but if the towns were within the 2% tax cap, but they overrode the tax cap, I do not believe that they're eligible for this. I think they had to rescind their override by whatever the date was. I can't remember.
Yeah, but then, yeah, didn't they give you some kind of screwy thing you could go back and rescind it?
You could go back. If you overrode it in October or November, you had it till maybe January or February to rescind that. So, if you didn't rescind it and you overrode it, I don't think you're eligible for that anyways. Email show that 2% tax.
Dan?
Yeah, there is one shared services. That's this contract with the assessors between E-Town, Westport, and the county. And we can show true savings. I mean, we've got all the budgetary figures, and there are definitely savings there on both sides.
Yeah, those three towns.
Those three towns.
For those three towns. But that's a shared service that the county is into, so it's something.
But the county, well, we're trying to find out if the county's even precluded. The conversation now is what towns, that the towns can benefit from. Which, you're right, those three towns. Randy?
Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, but wasn't it my understanding that the county had to be the lead agency for this? No? So, every town can do their own plan? Have to.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you can.
You can also share with other towns and villages and?
But the county can act as a lead agency. But I think you can also, the towns can act as individual lead agencies.
See, that I wasn't clear on.
And the only other thing is, is the budget area is around. Dan and I, quite a while back, had some discussions on the forestry money and trying to deviate away from the 5%. How do you make up that 3%? And the problem is, as Dan pointed out to me, and he's correct.
One shot.
It's a one-shot deal.
Yeah.
So, where are you in 2017? You're right back to, you know, I got to be careful.
If I'm, if I may, that, that's a good point. And that's why the one-shot deals doesn't fix your problem. So, you know, I just think it's something that that Budget Subcommittee should look at together and bring something forward to the board so we're, you know? We're really under the gun to make this all work and for the towns even, you know, so.
Okay. So, Judy will get, or Dave will get a meeting set up. All right. Surplus fish?
That's me too, I'm sorry. But 2010, I did the research. We had a meeting here, had a lot of participants together, wrote the DEC letters. I pulled the file out. Steve Lemire anticipates having lots of excess fish. Currently, we do sell fish to the Whiteface Visitors Bureau. But we, if we have all this excess fish and it can bring in revenue to the county, and we, I think we should follow up and find out what is the final approval. I told Dan Manning last week that I would give this folder to him to take a look at and see what other criteria we have to get followed to make this work because Steve has said he has excess fish and it's revenue to the county. I know, you know, looking back through this, the DEC has had a few guidelines that we had to follow. But I think we've solved all the issues. I'm sure Dan Palmer, didn't we solve all those? I mean, it's five years ago.
I think so, yeah. I think those were all addressed.
So, I'm going to give Dan Palmer this folder today to sit with Dan Manning to see if this is something that can be worked out and to come back. Because it is revenue. If we have excess fish and people want to buy them, it's revenue to the county, so.
George, you had something on that?
We went through this time and time and time again. And the need to transfer from the DEC to the county specifically precludes that. You've got to give it back. That's what you're going to do.
But at that time, the Commissioner of DEC was given this approval to do this back in 2000. I'm looking through all the correspondence. He said that the language could be changed after we reached out to the acting Commissioner then and through Commissioner Martin.
The next person you're going to see back there is the people that raise fish for sale.
Right. Actually, yeah. It might be. But it's something to look at. Steve has the excess fish. We certainly don't want to hurt the private industry. But if it's something that creates revenue for the county and it's something to board. But let's let Dan and Dan look at it, come back and see if we can do it. I mean, it looks like to me, from everything I've read, and I'm no attorney, read through what the DEC told us we had to do, I think we've met all those guidelines, so.
That's news to me.
Which one's the worst, will I have a fish, Ron?
Okay.
Tax foreclosures?
That's me too. Tax foreclosure. From, every, of the emails I've been receiving from most of you, to meet the guidelines and working with the county attorney, from what I see is we have two newspapers that have come forward wanting to be involved with the notices for the legals on the foreclosure list. Currently, we have is our legal papers, the Press Republican and the Glens Falls Post. My opinion would be to recommend that we add the other two for the tax sale foreclosures so we're hitting more people, but not change who the legal papers are for the tax foreclosures because I don't, Dan has, Dan Manning has a question whether it meets all the legality stuffs. So, why not for another, it looks like somewhere around $5,000 to do this? Why aren't we adding these other papers? And, you know, it's open to discussion. I just want to be able to give the newspapers an answer. They both, they've come with a request, and somehow, we've got to answer them. If we don't do it, fine, but I want to give them some sort of answer.
The, my understanding in the law, of course, is the Treasurer's decision anyway, right? As to what legal papers he chooses to. We're doing the Post Star and the Press Republican, and I think that's where we should stay with it. I mean, why spend another $5,000 if, I mean, the, people are aware of these tax sales. It's out there. You can go by subscription, but you really can't because, you know, the Press Republican, the Post Star even in my community, they sell a lot of newspapers off the newsstand. So, I, I feel bad for the smaller papers, but they still get a lot of our business. And I think we should stay where we are. That's my opinion.
All I'm asking is that we put it to a vote so we can end this in one way or another. That's all I'm asking.
Any comments? Randy?
With all due respect to our Chairman, I don't agree with this extra. To me, it's just a gift of taxpayer money to generate business for him. And we're doing, according to our county attorney, we're doing everything we legally need to be doing. And to do it, it, to me, it looks like we're just doing it to give business to these people. And that's what we shouldn't be doing with taxpayer dollars. So, because of that, I certainly couldn't vote for it.
Let me just add.
I have, I've been real quiet on this. I haven't been.
You have.
The truth of the matter is, I don't think that any taxpayer who's behind those taxes could ever say that I didn't see the paper, so I did not know my property was up for sale. We send them a certified letter. We send them a notice. We post on their property. All of those things are done.
their property. All of those things are done. So what's the value to having it in the paper? The value to having it in the paper is it, and this historically is what happens. It generates people paying their taxes that are not in the paper, that have not received the letter, but who don't want to be in the paper and who do not want to receive that letter. So typically, when we publish in a paper, we get people coming in to pay their taxes that may only be one year behind, may only be two years behind. But they do it because they say, oh, crap, I forgot to pay my taxes. Or I did not pay my taxes last year. And I don't want to be in a position where somebody sees it in the paper. So for this board, I think that's the value you have to determine. Whether reaching more people through publication is a value that generates maybe more interest in people coming in and paying their taxes who may have fallen a year or two behind. But for those people who haven't paid their taxes in four or five years, papers aren't going to do anything. They know their property is up for sale. They know the sign is in New Yard. They know they've received a certified letter. So in that sense, I don't think it makes much difference. But it does generate extra revenue when you publish in a paper.
Do you want to move a resolution?
I can't.
Yes, you can.
That's only if the committee...
Only, only if you're short members.
Does anyone want to move a resolution that we add Den Publications and the Adirondack Daily? Are those the papers we're talking about?
Uh, Adirondack Daily Enterprise.
Adirondack Daily Enterprise and Den Publications. Does anyone want to offer that resolution?
Yeah, and I want to make it clear, it's not the Lake Placid News. Because I, I don't want to get into that extra expenses.
Hey, does anyone want to offer that resolution? Okay, anything else, Mr.?
I just, I'd be glad. There was some way I can send them a letter and say, we discussed it thoroughly, researched it, and it didn't go through. It's, that's all I wanted to do. It's, I certainly wasn't trying to give, give to taxpayer dollars. I was trying to figure out, they came to us, wanted to listen to their concerns, reach more people and, and let it be. I do have some sympathy for them because they are the ones that sit here every day and, when we're here and cover it. But I, I understand and I live with it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further to come before this committee, Mr. Merrick?
Just along those same discussions, I think for clarity for the media, that it is understood, this is the county treasurer's call.
Yes.
Whether we take, you know, action on it one way or the other, really doesn't matter. I believe Mr. Diskin believes he's fulfilling all his legal obligations. There's no reason for us to be drawn into this. And I think the papers need to be aware of that.
Mr. Douglas?
The last thing I have is, I told you I'd have it by Friday. I didn't tell you what Friday. But finally, I got the occupancy tax vacation rental committee. Got our notifications are in your box. Judy put them out this morning. So thank you. And the media does have them too. So thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further to come before this committee? If not, we stand adjourned.